Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, January the 8th, 2018. Happy New Year. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise and please remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Lowell Nelson, Emmanuel Lutheran Church, 104 Galvin Road North.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Thank you, God, for the gift of government, of people elected, of people engaged, and people who serve in their careers this city. I ask a blessing upon this meeting to be a blessing to all who live here, who look upon this city as a place of safety and comfort, of challenge, of good economy and recreation. Thank you, God, for this blessing for this meeting. Amen.
Second item is will call, please.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
My name is Ryan.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Modri?
Here.
Thank you. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chamber. Item 3 is approval of agenda consent agenda minutes and advisory committee reports.
So, item 1 is the approval of the agenda?
Mr. Modri.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second by Mr. Thomas, Mr. Burns. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
So, item B is approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless there is a request from a citizen or a city council member, in which case the item will be removed and placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. So, item 1 is the approval of the minutes of the December 11, 2017, meeting of the city council and the December 19, 2017, strategic planning session. Item 2, acknowledged receipt of minutes of the December 21, 2017, meeting of the Planning Commission. Item 3, acknowledged receipt of claims paid out December 26, 2017. Item 4, approval of claims. Item 5, approve the renewal of the 2018 Maintenance Agreement Number 5 and Certificate of Compliance between the City of Bellevue and the Nebraska Department of Transportation and authorizing the mayor to sign. Item 6, approve the appointment of an ad hoc committee to review cemetery rules consisting of city council members, John Hanson, Don Preister, and Pat Shannon, and Public Works Director Jeff Roberts, Park Superintendent Brian Madison, and City Administrator Joe Mangiamele, and utilizing city, excuse me, Assistant City Attorney Timothy Buckley for legal assistance. Mayor or council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Modri.
I request we remove item 6 from the consent agenda.
That'll go into current business, then item J.
Okay.
Okay. We already have a J.
Anything else, Mr. Shannon?
I would make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus item 6.
Second.
Discussion?
Did you get the second, Sabrina? Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
On the strategic planning session, we have something in our packets that's a one-page, you held a meeting, but there are no minutes there. Since I was at an accounting conference speaking to CPAs, I'd like to see the actual minutes of that meeting or some kind of synopsis of what transpired, because we don't have minutes of that meeting. We have a note that the meeting happened.
The minutes are being developed and they will be provided to the city council.
Okay. Do we need to amend what we're approving since we don't have minutes?
Those are the minutes for the meeting. He's talking about what we'll have is the actual plan.
The actual plan.
There, we don't really take minutes at the meeting, so...
We need to call it something else because we're approving minutes.
So, Sabrina, I'm looking at page 8 of my agenda packet.
Right.
And that appears to be a minute record of the strategic planning meeting.
And that's just the way we've done it ever since we've done strategic planning like this, because the plan is the actual, what's done, because I'm an active participant in the meeting, so, I mean, I don't know what, if you want me to call it something else, then I will, but...
It appears to me to be minutes of the strategic planning meeting.
Okay, then I'm fine with it.
Are there any other questions, discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 4 is approval of claims, which we've just done through the consent agenda. Item 5 is special presentation, a presentation on a War on Terror Memorial in American Heroes Park. Mr. Frazier is in attendance.
Good evening, Mayor Sanders, city council members and members of the city government. My name is Ed Frazier, and tonight I'm proposing for the city council's approval a change to the American Heroes Park master plan to include a War on Terror Memorial. First, I would like to share that I've been stationed at Off-At Air Force Base for the past year. However, I attended Birchcrest and Mission in the 1980s when my dad was assigned to Headquarters Strategic Air Command. Fast forward 30 years, and I'm delighted to return to Bellevue with a family of my own. I'd also like to share that my family adopted American Heroes Park last April through Bellevue's Adopt a Park program. The before and after pictures on this slide represent more than 140 volunteer hours of friends, Bellevue residents, and Off-At Air Force Base personnel taking care of the 9/11 Memorial, the Nature and History Trail, and the path around the pond, but we have much more to give. We are therefore proposing a War on Terror Memorial to complement the existing 9/11 Memorial in American Heroes Park pictured on the left. In a much broader sense, it will also complement the traveling memorial pictured on the right called Remembering Our Fallen, with which you may already be familiar, and although not pictured here, the post-9/11 memorial in the Veterans Memorial Garden in Lincoln, which was dedicated just two months ago on Veterans Day. We further propose the threefold purpose and scope of the memorial to memorialize Nebraska's sons and daughters who sacrificed their lives in the War on Terror, to recognize the sacrifices of Nebraska's War on Terror Golds to our families, and recognize all U.S. service members who serve or have served in the War on Terror. For reference, we defined War on Terror according to the Department of Defense Global War on Terror Expeditionary Medal, or GWAT, EM, criteria, which generally consists of a deployed military member participating in the operations listed at the bottom of this slide. The highlighted operations are those in which Nebraskans lost their lives. We initially proposed to Public Works physically integrating the War on Terror Memorial with the 9/11 Memorial. Public Works expressed support for our concept but rejected the proposed location due to concerns associated with the Kramer Power Plant Fly Ash. Public Works recommended instead, seeking your approval, to include the War on Terror Memorial in Heroes Plaza as depicted on the right of this slide. With your approval, we will continue coordinating with Public Works and HGM, the company responsible for the Park's master plan, to finalize the memorial design as American Heroes Park Phase 6 takes shape this year. Speaking of the design, the following is just one concept but gives us a place to start nonetheless. We begin with a black or dark granite wall similar to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, D.C., but without any engraving. Our heroes' names, ranks, branches of service, and dates of death would be plasma-cut into the chronologically arranged polished metal panels mounted 1 to 2 inches in front of the granite wall. Add landscaping and backlight the panels to illuminate the names during periods of darkness so that we never forget our heroes. We would also include a plaque to clearly explain the previously briefed purpose and scope and recognize the donors who made the memorial possible. With your approval, we will also begin our fundraising goal of 100% of the construction costs, then annually raising 100% of the sustainment and maintenance costs. We certainly don't want to raise funds against an open-ended goal, so we will work with HGM to derive an estimate and advertise that goal as soon as possible. Our fundraising efforts will begin immediately after your approval, but our formal kickoff event, which separately requires the city's approval, will be Freedom Running Company's Memorial March, a walk, run, ruck event tentatively scheduled for Memorial Day weekend to rally donors and the community. Additional fundraising efforts include soliciting Bellevue and Omaha metro area businesses, corporations, and organizations, leveraging social media platforms and word of mouth, and of course, grant applications. Finally, we are in the process of establishing a fund under Midland's Community Foundation to ensure that all donations to the American Heroes Park Fund are tax deductible. Before I conclude, we'd like to recognize those who have voiced support for this proposal so far. Mr. Brian Madison, Mr. Dean Dunn, and Mr. Jeff Roberts, who patiently responded to all of our questions and were instrumental in affording us this opportunity tonight. Mr. Bill and Mrs. Barb O'Donnell, representing the Kiwanis Club of Bellevue and are responsible for leading the annual 9/11 memorial ceremony in American Heroes Park. Mr. Joe and Mrs. Jamie Ramos of Freedom Running Company, and of course, the many American Heroes Park volunteers who generously donate their time and energy to keeping Bellevue beautiful. Thank you again for your time and consideration this evening. I'd be happy to field your questions and welcome any feedback you have for us. Yes, sir.
Will the power for the backlighting come from solar, or what are you looking at for powering that?
So, those are details that we'll have to navigate and negotiate with HGM and Public Works. Our intent, at least per this proposal, is to leverage the infrastructure associated with Heroes Plaza.
Okay. I have some contacts at Min America Energy where I might be able to make that happen for you, is why I asked.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that.
This is probably a question for Mr. Roberts. I didn't, from that diagram, I wasn't able to pinpoint exactly where they were going to place this.
This is in the general vicinity of that outtake structure that's still standing.
Oh, so way in the back?
Towards the back, yeah, towards the north end, yep.
No interference with, I know that the other project that we were going to...
It's going to be in the same location as where that project was proposed.
And what do you, what would you estimate as far as to get this thing set up, the initial setup of it, cost-wise, and then maintenance thereafter, because I'm sure there's going to be obviously names added and stuff like that?
Yes, sir. We, unfortunately, we don't have a cost estimate, yes, yet. In fact, as a result of an approval tonight, should that be the case, we'll work with HGM as quickly as we can, one, to finalize the design concept, but then put figures to it so that we can, in earnest, begin our fundraising.
Do you have, I know, is there already a group assembled to move forward with this? Is there already a committee, a group? I guess my concern is sustainability. I think you referenced that you're still in the Air Force. You know, if you're transferred, who's going to step in and say, "I'm now Mr. Frazier"?
Yes, sir. So, the effort is really done through those who adopted American Heroes Park, so I'm just representing my family and our friends, the volunteers that, or the volunteer opportunities, I should say, that we organize to support the entire park.
So, that's already pretty much in place?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I know, I noticed you mentioned, I think you said there was something that recently opened in Lincoln, Nebraska, looked like by Pinnacle Bank, if that was the picture there. Is there anything around Omaha or any else, anything closer than Lincoln that has something like this that's closer to Bellevue?
No, sir. According to the research that we've done, there's nothing closer. And just to clarify, I've actually brought the slide back up. On the right-hand side, Remembering Our Fallen is a traveling memorial...
Oh, okay.
...that was created by Patriotic Productions, and that was founded by Mr. Bill and Ms. Yvonne Williams here in Omaha. They've, of course, taken that effort to much greater extents, but that is a traveling memorial.
Okay.
The other memorial that I mentioned is a so-called post-9/11 memorial in Lincoln, and that was dedicated just two months ago on Veterans Day.
Okay. I think anytime we can recognize, acknowledge, and thank veterans, especially those who lost their lives, I think it's a neat project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions from the council? It's very commendable. Appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, would you suspect that the next step would be working with the group and HGM to develop that cost estimate and then getting the project into our capital improvement program?
Yeah, in fact, there's an item on tonight for HGM to start with Phase 6 construction, and so, yeah, we can incorporate it into it and get in our CIP. And to answer the electrical question, Councilman Shannon, we are planning on bringing power down this phase of it also.
Mr. Frazier, would you email me your PowerPoint?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. So, move on to item number 6, liquor license, Daniel J. Gross Catholic High School.
So, item A is Daniel J. Gross Catholic High School, the application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer and distilled spirits during a trivia night fundraiser at 7700 South 43rd Street on February 10, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Is there someone here from Gross High School? Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Janet Van Houten. I'm the Business Manager at Gross Catholic High School. We are requesting the one-day liquor license permit for a fundraiser our 10th year of doing so.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? See none, not open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see no others. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the Daniel J. Gross Catholic High School application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer and distilled spirits during their trivia night fundraiser at 7700 South 34th Street on February 10, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. till 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Put the correction to 43rd Street. 34, yeah.
And a second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
Yes, I will be abstaining from voting on this item for religious and personal reasons.
Any other questions for discussion items? See none, please vote.
Three yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item 7, ordinance for adoption, third reading, none. IT 8, ordinance for public hearing, second reading.
So, item A is ordinance number 3894, amending section 6 point dash 0 and adding section 6 dash 23 and 6 dash 47 of the Bellevue Municipal Code to allow for pet advocacy permits. I'll read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance to amend section 6 dash 0 and to add section 6 dash 23 and 6 dash 47 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to animals. To repeal section 6 dash 0 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Also for public hearing this evening on this item, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so.
Mayor. Point of order, Mr. Shannon appears to have left the council chamber, and right now we are not at a quorum unless he's going to come back. I see him in the back.
Give us just a moment, Mr. Wills.
No problem at all. I understand. Give me a chance to cool down. Stop shaking, I mean. Not cool now.
Welcome.
Are we back in quorum?
We are.
Okay, fine. My name's Michael Wills. I live at 1321 Harrison Street here in Bellevue, and I'm rising to talk about voting yes for this ordinance. My wife got me a book for Christmas, and it's called Arthur, and if you can find it, read it. Arthur was found in the Ecuadorian jungle and followed a team of extreme racers home to Sweden, and it's a fantastic book. Why did I bring that up? Because there are a lot of Arthurs out there, and even though I have a large yard and I have space for more dogs, unfortunately, because of my wife's and my disabilities, we're not able to do it, but there's a lot of people in this town who should, and I firmly believe, I absolutely firmly believe, that this ordinance should be passed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there others?
Kelly Brown, Director of Field Operations with the Nebraska Humane Society, and I'm just here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Are there any questions, Ms. Brown? See none. Thank you for being here this evening. Appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Shannon Grapes, and I have a pet advocacy permit in Omaha, and I also work a lot with rescue organizations and rescue groups, and just on behalf of all of us who are involved in that, we would appreciate the passing of this ordinance so we can increase the number of potential foster homes for the dogs that we rehome throughout the year. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any questions? See none, thank you. Oh, yes, both of our speakers, if you could sign in, please, so we have it on record. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Al Hoffman. I live at 2315 Hogentown in Bellevue. We're one of the foster families she just mentioned. We foster greyhounds. I just wanted to throw out a stat, if I got the numbers right from the websites, 579 of these advocacy permits were put into Omaha or active right now, out of 162,000 homes, which is one out of about 280 homes. If you use that same statistic for the Bellevue population, there would only be 69 homes applying for this, so if anyone's fearful of they're going to have dogs all over their neighborhood, that's probably not going to happen. You'd be lucky to have one person like that in your subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others?
Yale Clanderood, 514 Bellevue Boulevard North. Again, I'm here to speak on behalf of favor of passage of this ordinance. First of all, I want to thank Jim for putting this in front of the council. He's done a lot of heavy lifting, and there's a lot of riding on that. So, Jim, thank you very much. Kelly, thank you very much as well. I mean, Nebraska Humane Society is here. She's on her own personal time, you know, most of us work 8 to 5, so she really stepped outside the box and is helping this out. Again, I think this is a good thing. It's a process that allows pet owners to step outside, you know, well, I'll just read my notes. The advocacy permit process allows responsible pet owners a vetting process in order to increase the number of owned pets beyond the mandatory number established by the present city code. This ordinance is not intended for kennels, breeders, et cetera. Generally speaking, you'll find the avocation permit holders are people that are working with the local rescues and the Nebraska Humane Society to either rescue or foster animals. This is not a for-profit in Denver. We're giving the citizens of Bellevue the opportunity to legally and responsibly increase the number of pets they own. This is a proven process. The advocacy process has a track record of proven performance for Omaha, Nebraska, with a city of over 500 residents, and a person before me presented that. This program is administered by a proven provider. The program is administered by one of the oldest and most respected humane societies in the country, so much so that the city has entrusted its pet control responsibilities to Nebraska Humane Society. Pet advocacy permit holders have skin in the game. Besides meeting all of the licensing and vaccination requirements, there's a $100 application fee, a $50 ongoing annual renewal fee, and inspections by the Humane Society, a fairly rigorous process. You know, for those unfortunate few that for very valid reasons have exceeded the city maximums, this will open the door to bring them into compliance. Their current alternative is to hide from city inspectors by not licensing, dispersing their pet care among several veterinarians who evade limit laws, ultimately forcing them to surrender animals to local shelters. Restrictive pet ordinances are a barrier to pet growth. For those pet-conscious, particularly younger individuals, Bellevue is not an option. Passage to this ordinance will change that. Furthermore, this ordinance, I believe, in a very small way, will enhance the perception that Bellevue is a progressive and forward-thinking community. And I had a little speech written here that we weren't going to have a lot of community support, but I, we got a lot. I'm really surprised by that. I believe there was a letter circulated from the AKC sent to the mayor questioning this ordinance. I believe those concerns in that letter are unfounded. This ordinance is not about setting arbitrary numbers for pet ownership but ensuring safe and responsible pet ownership. If anyone has any concerns about that letter, I'd like to discuss that probably outside of this presentation, just not to waste the committee's, the council's time. Simply put, this ordinance is good for Bellevue, good for people, good for pets. I just simply ask that you approve it as presented.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to make a comment. We did receive a letter, and I sent an email to the Nebraska Humane Society, and as usual, they responded. I wasn't concerned with what was really said there. I was more concerned if we had speakers here just so that we would be prepared maybe to address some of their concerns, and that always happens with the Nebraska Humane Society. Kelly Brown is here tonight. She was here at our last meeting. I'm on my sixth, starting my sixth year on this council, and the Nebraska Humane Society has been great. After looking at the material we got on this, I feel very confident that it's going to be very well managed by the Nebraska Humane Society, and I think if people maybe get out of the box and try to push things or maybe not follow the rules, I honestly believe that the Humane Society will be on it and will make sure that either people, if they get out of compliance, they bring it back into compliance. So, it looks like Mr. Modri and the Nebraska Humane Society has done a lot of work on this, and the material the council has received, I think it's going to be a very great program. Thank you.
Are there any others that would like to speak on this item? I see none. I'll close the public hearing. The third reading will be on January 22nd. Item number 9, ordinance for introduction, first reading.
So, item A...
We did receive a letter and I sent an email to the Nebraska Humane Society and as usual, they responded. I wasn't concerned with what was really said there. I was more concerned if we had speakers here just so that we would be prepared maybe to address some of their concerns. And that always happens with the Nebraska Humane Society. Kelly Brown is here tonight. She was here at our last meeting. I'm on my sixth, starting my sixth year on this council and the Nebraska Humane Society has been great. After looking at the material we got on this, I feel very confident that it's gonna be very well managed by the Nebraska Humane Society. And I think if people maybe get out of the box and try to push things or maybe not follow the rules, I honestly believe that the Humane Society will be on it and will make sure that either people, if they get out of compliance, they bring it back into compliance. So it looks like Mr. Muldry and the Nebraska Humane Society has done a lot of work on this and the material the council has received, I think it's gonna be a very great program. Thank you.
Are there any other that would like to speak on this item? I see none. I'll close a public hearing. The third reading will be on January twenty-second. Item number nine, ordinance for introduction, first reading.
Subitem A is ordinance number three-eight-nine-five, repealing ordinance number three-eight-seven-nine, creating street improvement districts two zero-one-seven dash one through two zero-seven, two zero-one-seven dash six inclusive. I'll read the title. An ordinance to repeal ordinance number three-eight-seven-nine, adopted by the Bellevue City Council on May eighth, two thousand seventeen, creating street improvement districts number two thousand, two zero-one-seven dash one, two, two zero, dash, two zero, one-seven dash
Six.
four, the ordinance says, but the agenda says six. Sabrina, do you know which is correct? Is our ordinance, actual ordinance incorrect? Should the four be a six?
I'm pulling up the original three-eight-seven-nine, so if you just bear with me for a second.
Do you have that, Jeff?
The original, the one that we're repealing is districts one through four.
So our agenda item should be reflective of one through four?
That should be one through four, correct.
Okay, so our ordinance number three-eight-nine-five, which is proposed, is correct then. So there's no action required on this this evening. It'll have public hearing at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Item B is ordinance number three-eight-nine-six, repealing ordinance number three-eight-seven-nine, creating sidewalk improvement districts two zero-one-seven dash one through two zero-one-seven dash six inclusive. I'll read the title. An ordinance to repeal ordinance number three-eight-seven-nine, adopted by the Bellevue City Council on August fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, creating sidewalk improvement district numbers two zero-one-seven dash one to two zero-one-seven dash six inclusive in the city of Bellevue. Again, no action required this evening. It'll have public hearing at the next city council meeting. Item C is ordinance number three-eight-nine-seven, creating street improvement districts two zero-one-eight dash one through two zero-one-eight dash six for the purpose of bonding. I'll read the title. An ordinance creating street improvement districts number two zero-one-eight dash one, two, two zero-one-eight dash six inclusive in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, ordering the construction of street improvements therein and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. Once again, no action required this evening. Public hearing will be next council meeting. Item D is ordinance number three-eight-nine-eight, creating street, excuse me, sidewalk improvement districts two zero-one-eight dash one through two zero-one-eight dash six inclusive. I'll read the title. An ordinance creating street improvement, excuse me, sidewalk improvement districts number two zero-one-eight dash one, two, two zero-one-eight dash six inclusive in the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, ordering the construction of sidewalk improvement districts therein and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form. No action required this evening. Public hearing will be the next council meeting. Item E is ordinance number three-eight-nine-nine, amending sections five point two-two, five point two-three, and five point two-four of the Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding self-service laundry facilities. The applicant is TCH Inc. and the city of Bellevue. I'll read the title. An ordinance to amend sections five point two-two, five point two-three, and five point two-four of ordinance number three-six-one-nine, Bellevue zoning ordinance, relating to laundry self-service automatic in the general business zoning district, BGM Metropolitan General Business Zoning District and BGH Heavy General Business Zoning District, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing to provide an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the public publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form. Again, no action required this evening. Public hearing will be next council meeting. And item F is ordinance number three-nine-zero-zero, rezoning lots one through two-two-seven and outlots A through D Falcon Point from AG to RS seventy-two and RG fifty-dash PS for the purpose of residential development. The applicant is Charleston Homes. General location is southwest corner Forty-Eighth Street and Cape Hart Road. Title of the ordinance is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number three-six-one-nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about the southwest corner of South Forty-Eighth Street and Cape Hart Road, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date. Once again, no action required this evening. Public hearing will be at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Item ten is public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Subitem A is a public hearing on the event license application of the MAC Throwers for the Nebraska Celtic Festival to be held April seven and April eight, two thousand eighteen, from seven AM to sunset in Hayworth Park. This matter was continued from the November twenty-seven and December eleven city council meetings.
See applicant here.
Hi, I'm Josh Hagan. I'm a representative for MAC Throwers.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Shannon.
I have seen nothing change in our packet from the police as far as a recommendation for approval. What's in the packet is a recommendation for disapproval. Have you had time to work this and are you now recommending approval?
We are. We've met with him previously, discussed our concerns with him. He's met all of our needs and we're very satisfied that he has a plan and place that's acceptable and doable.
Okay. And Public Works, we know we can support his water requirements and other things that he's asked for now?
Yeah, there was no, no problems with Public Works.
Okay.
Are there any questions for the council?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. I'll open for public hearing, so anyone else that would like to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close a public hearing.
Mayor, I move for approval of item ten A.
Second.
Second. Mr. Burns, discussion or questions? See none. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, resolutions.
Subitem A is resolution number two zero-one-eight dash zero-one, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the labor agreement with the Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association, BPFA, for the period of two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one.
Mr. Shannon.
I would move to approve item eleven A.
Second.
Second. Mr. Burns, discussion or questions? Mr. Shannon.
All right. In reviewing the contract, the first thing I want to discuss is Article Nine. Under Section Three, the last sentence, it says employees shall have rehire rights for a period of six, but it fails to say six what? Days, months, years, centuries? We need to fix this.
So we have a word missing. Ashley or Karen, are you in attendance?
It's months. Okay, and we can get that correction in? Correct me if I'm wrong, but this contract is for part-time firefighters?
Yes.
Okay. Reading so many contracts at the same, for the same meeting, it's difficult to keep them separate, but I believe in here that when we went through and set the steps up for the pay contracts that we just did, that we set paramedics up as a separate. We were paying them as medical doctors or something on a separate line. You had a separate category for the paramedics?
That's the full-time.
That's on the full-time contract?
The next contract.
Okay, we'll save that for the next contract. The other thing that hit me in this contract is that we're giving an awful lot of benefits to part-time employees and especially in the holiday pay area. I thought going to two and a half times base pay for holidays was excessive. I think two times base pay is what the federal law requires.
No, it's, it's straight time plus time and a half, and that's what we're matching. Straight time plus time and a half. I'm answering with what the full-time firefighters get.
I don't think that's what the FLSA says.
Well, every, every contract I've seen for forty years has that in it, so. Base play, base play plus overtime. Is the straight time plus overtime?
You get double time on holidays.
Double time and a half. Double time and a half.
We're writing in double time and a half, but civilian companies are paying double time.
Well, we don't compare ourselves to civilian companies. We have the CIR which establishes our rules that we have to be comparable to other governmental entities.
I can talk about that a little bit more, too. With our civilians, if they were to work on the actual holiday, they would get time and a half plus the holiday pay, which is double time and a half. But for part-time fire, they were not getting the holiday pay before. It was one of the items that we bargained into their contract. We don't have to pay holiday pay at all. But if someone is taking their time off of their full-time job, working as a firefighter for holidays that we mandate, which it doesn't specify that in the contract, but there is a policy, a general order, that they mandate that they have to work so many holidays in a year. We thought that that was a fair compromise to do that.
All right. I'll let some of the council members comment.
Mr. Cook.
Mayor, I'm, I'm looking at page nineteen on the contract. It's page one-twenty-three of our whole agenda. And it does say all licensed paramedics will receive an additional one dollar per hour to their base rate.
I think, well, I think he was talking about the medic officer in the first question, but yes, there is a dollar pay differential for paramedics.
Okay, but they're already paid more because they're paramedics. Now we're giving them a dollar extra because they're more?
No, they were never compensated for their paramedics before.
And what pay rate are they getting?
The regular firefighter rate. Prior to this contract, there was not a pay rate or an incentive pay for paramedics.
So you're saying EMTs and paramedics don't have a separate line?
No.
They don't have a separate pay scale?
No.
Remember, we're talking, this group is the part-time firefighters.
Well, it does say on the pay scale FF slash EMT on the first firefighter. I don't, and then the second classification is FAE and DM. So where, where does the paramedic fall into this? And if, if... I, I'm on page nineteen of the actual, well, wait a second. Oh, the packet. No, nineteen on the contract is where it talks about the paramedics who will receive one dollar hour per base rate.
Okay, everyone's an EMT, okay? That's a requirement to get hired. So, so that could just say firefighter. We just actually added EMT. It's not a special pay rate. That's the firefighter rate.
A paramedic is a license above and beyond what an EMT certification is.
So what is a FAE and a DM, Perry?
An FAE is a fire apparatus engineer and a DM is a driver of, of a medic unit.
And an FO and an MO?
Fire officer and medic officer.
So are paramedics generally on the squad?
Correct.
So if I'm a paramedic, can I jump on a fire truck? I still get paid that extra hour?
Yes, because on all of our fire trucks, we actually have paramedic equipment and they initiate paramedic treatment protocols as soon as they get on scene.
Do we offer, Ashley, do we offer overtime, holiday pay to part-time people in other departments?
No.
And what would be the justification for that?
Because we can't get anybody to come in and we can't order them. Every other department can.
Well, what I'm, what I'm just, what I'm trying to get to is that they're still taking time away from their family and their, and their work. I, I understand public safety is more of a higher priority issue. I'm not questioning that. But what I'm questioning is that if I'm a part-time at the library and it's open, am I paid straight time or overtime or holiday pay?
Well, I guess the difference is in any other department, they don't work on the holiday. The city recognized holiday is closed for everybody, so they wouldn't be eligible for any type of pay like that. Only sworn officers, either the fire department, police department, would be working on the holiday.
And we, we, I had some, we, there was a death benefit of ten thousand and then there was an on-duty death benefit of fifteen thousand. And we eliminated the ten thousand and we, what happened was they increased the fifteen to fifty, fifteen to fifty-two thousand. What was the reason or justification for that? I guess, and here's why I'm asking these questions, is I look at a lot of these people, their full-time job is, being a part-time firefighter, they probably have another full-time job, which that's where they probably get their medical and pay into a pension, get dental, get holidays, get, you know, their, I guess, a benefit packet. And it just seems that we're sort of stepping into a little bit of a different territory. Now we're offering part-time some benefits that were normally to full-time. And I guess, I guess my concern is where does it stop? And if we're gonna start here...
I understand why you're asking.
Why doesn't it go to someone part-time? If I'm mowing the grass in the parks and I flip my lawnmower over and it's killed me, how, why is, are they not given that same death benefit? If I'm a part-time in the library and someone accidentally or intentionally pushes me and I hit my head and I die, we're not, to me, we're, we're making some exceptions and I think that's wrong.
So there was two separate articles. The death benefit was essentially a life insurance policy. It could be for any reason. Then there was the line of duty death benefit, which was a separate article. So we eliminated the death benefit and rolled them into line of duty. So, I mean, I'm not an actuary, but the odds of having a line of duty death is a lot lower than having a normal death benefit. And that was just something that we negotiated through the process. Obviously, there's inherent risk with a firefighter and acting in firefighter capacity
I fully understand that.
versus working at the library.
Give me just a second. Could you speak into the microphone, please, for the record? Thank you.
I guess my concern is, is that we're, we're, we're starting to offer, this is a start, even though maybe it's minor, we're starting to offer benefits that we give to full-time employees. And I think honestly, in some of these cases, these are benefits that they should get from their full-time employment. We have a lot of people that work part-time, seasonal, temporary, and, you know, heaven forbid, we come into the summer and one of those people get killed and there's no benefit. And, and I, listen, I was a policeman for thirty-one years. First responders, absolutely, the danger, the concern is always there. But I guess, I think it's a situation where if we give them part-time benefits in one department, why are we not looking at across the city? And I know that's probably an answer to a question that we need to talk about later, but I just don't know if this is a good direction to go. When we were trying to increase their pay, we'd given them like a seven, seven and eight percent. Now we're jumping into, I was looking at starting pay today versus starting pay once this contract goes in. I think between those three classifications, it's a jump at the beginning introductory level of eleven percent. At the top pay, it's a jump of about six point three percent. We're seeing significant increases in pay. And I know they're part-time, but everything gets pushed. When we, when we push here for pay, it pushes somewhere else for pay and benefits. So that's a concern. Thank you.
Mr. Manjimali.
Mr. Cook, if there were any number of items that this group was bargaining for, we limited it to those items, like the insurance, that we felt was equitable and fair. These people are accompanying our full-time firefighters on any call and response for service. While Ashley is correct, the actuarial incidents that they might be killed in, in the line of duty is small. The potential that they would be killed alongside of a full-time firefighter in a response, we felt the equity of providing them the same benefit in that death situation was appropriate. As I mentioned at the start here, there were any number... As as I mentioned at the start here, there were any number of benefits that this group was attending, attempting to bargain for, which we did not agree with and did not approve in this contract that's before you. So I don't I don't think that your fear of us opening up a door or getting on a slippery slope of giving this group more benefits than other groups is going to come to fruition. Besides that, this is a four-year contract and so it's going to be locked in at this level for the next four years.
Mr. Shannon, do you have?
I'd just like Mr. Buckley to weigh in on that, that do you feel that we would have an equal protection clause claim if we're treating classes of part-time civilian or part-time employees differently? That we're not providing equal benefits to all our part-time people?
To sustain an equal protection claim, you have to show that the participants are similarly situated and I don't think that's the case here.
Okay, so you're you're comfortable with the differentiation?
Are there any other questions? Mr. Manjumali.
So if we add the word months to Article nine in the return to work, that would suffice.
That would that would that would suffice with that? And then this contract, I believe, is is retroactive, am I correct?
As far as wages go, yes.
Okay, can we hear from Rich on what what this retroactive is costing us?
For the year, this contract is going to cost about just under thirty, thirty-eight thousand for the year. So forty, so ten thousand dollars retroactive for the last quarter.
Okay, and then so we would be giving raises out based on October first and then we would turn around and give raises again January first?
It goes to their anniversary date, doesn't it? Yeah.
Anniversary dates at that point?
Yeah. Yep. So, yeah, it is expensive, but as Mr. Manjumali mentioned, that the directive was to make sure that we fall in line with what the CIR has directed. So we're 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 doing what we can to to make sure that that we get a contract and to make sure that we do, I hate to say the cheapest, but the most cost-effective way of supplementing the firefighters for the fire department.
Mr. Manjumali.
Yeah, I'd just add one more comment. Remember, council members, that this is the only opportunity we have to provide for the growth of the fire of the fire department. This is the pool of future firefighters that will make up our city force.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Perry, another thing that just stuck out and and maybe there's an easy answer here, but on some of these holidays, like New Year's Day is the holiday, but probably the most activity as far as people being out is New Year's Eve. So it just seems like some of these holidays, it just seems like if if tomorrow's a holiday, I can go out tonight and have fun because I can sleep in tomorrow. And and I I think we're okay with the way it has been written, but to me, that guy that comes in at six PM the night before and works till six AM will not receive any compensation for holiday pay.
That's not the way we wrote that. We wrote, we wrote it, I believe, to include. No, I, we identified, I thought in the article, what that 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 holiday would constitute the twenty-four-hour period.
I thought it was six AM of the day of. Yes.
Oh, well, that's, okay.
I guess, you know, I could work that six PM to six AM and be very busy because of the bars and whatever I'm doing out with my friends is they close at two and I get home at three or I party on. And I could go through all that night of all that activity and I don't get compensated for overtime and I've worked six hours of that day without overtime pay.
The shift is six to six.
It's six to six.
Six AM to six AM. So you have a twelve, a twenty-four-hour shift.
So if they worked half of that shift, if they worked half of that shift the following.
Well, but if it's six AM, okay, if it's six AM to six AM, I'm still not.
You're saying from midnight to six?
Still not going to get, yeah, six hours.
Yeah, that was what we negotiated.
Okay, that's, it seems crazy to me, but that's fine.
They they wanted to have some different holidays included and and we just drew the line at, the city drew the line at at the at the state of holidays.
I was surprised it was not midnight.
Yeah. Becomes very difficult to calculate, too, I can.
Well, I I understand.
Yeah, but.
It just seemed a little unusual. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? See none, we'll call the vote. Yeah, this was discussion.
I'll vote it yes.
Thank you.
Item B is Resolution Number two zero one eight dash zero two approving, approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the labor agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local four nine zero six for the period two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-two. This is a five-year contract with the full-time firefighters.
I want to blur on the last item. We, I want to make sure that the records are going to reflect that we approved that contract with a change.
To add six months.
Right.
Mr. Burns.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty eighteen dash zero two.
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Modri, discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
I'll start this one off, I guess. Oh, you have a number of, number of items. In Article twenty-four, the working out of classification, the pay, there are some some large jumps in the per-hour increase each year for those various classifications. Fifty-eight percent, driver-medic, upon ratification, they get a buck twenty per hour additional. The next year, it's a buck ninety per hour. That's a fifty-eight percent increase, then a thirty-seven percent increase, then a twenty-seven percent increase and a twenty-one percent increase in those little additional jumps. But what what was the rationale? Why, why are we doing that?
This is a five-year contract and we were deficient on the pay for those classifications of of personnel. And what we did was we used the deficiency divided by the five years and went to a seventy cent per year increase. It's a flat seventy cent per hour increase each year as opposed to having it all come in the first year. We're deferring the cost over the over the life of the contract.
Did you want to add something, Ashley?
And this again is is again attempting to build our fire department with qualified personnel.
Yeah, if we can afford it. Next item is Article thirty-eight. Why are we guaranteeing ten promotions to captain over the period?
Well, we're doing that because we have that number of rigs and that number of of calls for service that require a supervisory personnel on the rig. Chief Guido, do you have anything to add? Again, these these positions are staggered as detailed in the agreement.
My experience with the CIR and with Omaha is that those positions, which you're referring to, the captains' positions, there's a great likelihood, has been that way in the past, that people doing the work of a different higher rank get paid that rank immediately. So if we were, if this were to be a sticking point and we went to the CIR, there's a, there's a great chance that all those positions that are currently on there would have been gone, would have required us to pay at an acting captain's pays, pay at the lowest step of a of a first-year captain. This was a compromise recognizing that we could gradually get this in, but they also wanted to guarantee that those positions were promoted. Now whether we're paying them working out of class pay or we're promoting them, it's still going to be the same pay if we were to lose that in court and it would be eighteen positions rather than ten.
Additionally, another item I always talk about is longevity pay increases along with step increases, along with a one-point-six percent increase in the step rates each year. Get some, you get some hefty salary increases from year to year for folks when you factor in all those items.
Once again, these are based on the comparability analysis that we obtained and the the comparability analysis showed that we were deficient. There is no increase in the longevity in this contract over what was included in the last contract approved by the city council.
Yeah, that's true. If there's any state senators out there, we need to work on the CIR and the comparability rules. It's going to kill municipalities. Just can't afford it.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Modri? Mr. Shannon.
Chief, in Section seven, it's it says Article twenty, Section seven. In order to provide overtime compensation for employees assigned to a bureau shift, these are people that are assigned to forty-hour duty schedule. They don't get the opportunity to get overtime, so what we're going to do is just give them twelve hours free every month in overtime pay? So that it compensates for the people that are getting overtime pay?
Under FLSA, we work a fifty-six-hour work week. We're we're required to pay overtime for a fifty-six-hour work week after fifty-two hours. That is part of the regular pay. If we transfer someone into a bureau, they go to a twenty-eighty work schedule. They miss out on that fifty-two to fifty-six, which is part of the regular schedule of a twenty-four-hour shift personnel. If we don't pay them comparably, which is what we're doing, we're paying them comparably to what they were making. It becomes a disciplinary action to reduce their pay. So their pay is is moved equally with a factor of multiplication of one-point-four based off twenty-eighty hours and and twenty-nine-twelve. But that doesn't include the natural shift work that's that's added to make them work a twenty-four-hour shift that equals out. Otherwise, you would end up hiring a fourth shift to cover that, those four hours that that aren't covered on a twenty-nine-twelve.
That notwithstanding, you'd go broke doing this in a private company where little Johnny works overtime. So now we're going to give other people free overtime to compensate them because they didn't get the overtime?
You know, what we're doing is what is done across the country and FLSA is is, that is how they match that across the country. I, you know, I can say we're not a private entity. We are, we we don't make a profit. We certainly provide a service to people and we're doing a comparable study with other cities and that's what the CIR mandates and that's what we're doing.
And that conversion factor that Chief Guido mentioned is carried out, is carried throughout that contract. Just so that we're equating hours, whether it's overtime, whether it's funeral leave, whether it's disciplinary action, we're equating the suppression group with the bureau group by that factor.
Okay, and in this full-time contract, this is the one where paramedics are on a separate level on the pay scale, right?
Correct.
Yet there's still a dollar extra for them for being paramedics?
I've lost the question. Say that again.
In the add-ons? Or is that only in the part-time contract?
No, they're both the same on that. They they both get a dollar of specialty pay for that certification.
But they're on a special line on the pay scale already?
Well, no, they're not. That has to do with whether they're actually getting paid as a driver or a captain.
Now, that's another additive. A driver's another additive.
Okay, then I'm not sure I'm following what you're asking.
I'm going to have Ashley step in, please.
So if you look at the pay scale in the appendix, you can see there's three positions in here. It's firefighter, fire captain and battalion chief. So the same principle applies to the people that are licensed paramedics. They get a dollar on top of the firefighter wage. It's the same as a part-time contract, it just looks a little different.
Okay. And then if they drive and or are a paramedic, they get both?
Right.
I'm going to have to sell my house to afford to live here.
Mr. Cook.
Yes, Ashley, on Article sixteen, where it talks about the civil service guidelines, how come, how come we, if I'm reading this right, it says this will not go into effect until October first of two thousand twenty-two. Why, why would we not follow the guidelines of the civil service? I thought it was mandated by state law.
I'm probably not the best person to talk about this part either.
It is, Councilmember Cook, it is. This was a compromise that the union gave us with the, or tied in with the promotion of the captains. If the city stays with the promotional schedule of the four captains in two thousand nineteen, two captains in two thousand twenty, two captains in two thousand twenty-one and two additional captains in two thousand twenty-two, the term of this contract, if the city maintains that schedule, then the union has agreed that they will not file any court action with the CIR to force us into doing something different.
Yeah, Article sixteen just speaks to provisional appointment. So we are following all of the guidelines for the civil service. This is just saying that as far as the promotional and provisional opportunity, that wouldn't apply until after that October first date.
All right, I'm just now, I mean, if it's a promotion, I think it has to follow the civil service guidelines.
And it will.
It will. Then why isn't it effective until October first?
No. We won't have a promotional list, we don't even have the qualifications. And so if you put that in there immediately, what we're saying is we're going to, when we start promoting, we don't want the provisional to be, we don't want the working out of class to be confused with what provisional is. And so by the time we get the working out of class pay up to the two thousand twenty-two timeframe, then the provisional actually kicks in as it's intended to under the state statute.
You can't provisionally appoint someone that's not on a list.
We don't have it, they're not qualified at this point.
Do we follow the civil service guidelines?
Yes, we are following the civil service guidelines.
I guess, I don't understand these ten captain slots. To me, that should be a budgetary-type situation. It should come through where, hey, if I need one or two, it's brought to the council. We consider it, we make a decision. To me, as the department would grow, it would tell me that you would need maybe some additional supervisors, but I just, I'm having difficulty mandating that you're going to promote four, two, 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 when maybe over the next year or two, there's no increase or no changes to our authorized strength on the fire department.
This has, this does not, Councilman, this doesn't, this this isn't addressing the authorized strength. Right now, people are acting in those positions because they have to. When you have a fire truck, you have to have someone in charge. The Court of Industrial Relations doesn't. Relations doesn't recognize whether you call him a fire officer, whether you call him a lead firefighter, whether you call him a captain. They look at what job does he do, and they compare that responsibility and job with another fire department. At this point, if we went to the C I R, they would recognize eighteen positions that our people are currently doing because they're mandated under our entire system, the way we operate. They would be doing the same jobs as the captains in Papillion, the captains in Omaha, the captains in Council Bluffs. And the C R R would rule that that position should be paid captain's wages on an acting salary basis, and they would do that eight times eighteen. This way, we're gradually doing it and implementing it slowly because of the deficiency in resources to pay for that. This was a compromise by the union with us, recognizing that we're trying to get them to where comparability exists.
Was it brought up during the budget session?
This goes into effect, the first group is 2019, so yes, it will be part of the budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Shannon?
Rich, come tell us what each of these provisions is costing us.
I don't have the itemized list with me, but right around three hundred thousand is what this contract is over the run rate.
Over what we're already paying.
Yeah, but remember, this is a larger group. This is almost three million in wages.
And a five-year contract.
You know, you're free to give me a better question to answer anytime you want.
I know. I was hoping you had your list with you.
Are there any other questions?
I, I'm just still struggling with the concept that we're, we're dictating management decisions, you know, promotions to captain. That's a, that's a management decision. I don't think that belongs in a labor contract, but.
See no other questions? We had, we had a motion. Second, please vote.
Three to one.
One to three.
Oh, one to three, excuse me.
Motion fails.
Okay, Councilman, I guess I'd ask, what is your direction? We have a negotiated contract that you've rejected. What is your alternative?
Is that on our agenda tonight?
We're talking about item number eleven B, which you've just rejected. What is your direction?
Mayor, may I speak?
Mr. Cook?
What I would suggest, I would assume that this has to go back into negotiations. So I would ask that the city administrator meets with council members and gets the concerns, and then goes back to the negotiations. Would be my thought. I don't think we should discuss it here. It's a, it's a negotiations. I think there's been many areas of concern. I, I've, there's probably others we could have talked about. So I, Mr. Maggiely, out of respect, I just think it's something that we should probably meet on you in groups of three and maybe express some of our concerns and see how they can be addressed in additional negotiations and bring something back.
Well, the, the execution, I appreciate that. The execution of this agreement was done commensurate with our closed session that we held back in several months ago, anyway, when we started these negotiations. This contract, as Chief Guido indicated, leaves a lot of room on the, on the table for the union to take us to the C I R, and you will pay considerably more for that. You need to understand that that's the alternative that the union has if we don't negotiate a, a fair contract that is comparable to what the wages and benefits of their sister organizations in, within our array. So we may, we may not like individual items, but the cost of, of litigating this contract is far gonna exceed what Finance Director Severson indicated. Once we have that litigation in addition to the settlement that would be achieved.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. Maggiely, I, I truly respect and understand what you're saying. I would sure hope that, I have worked under contracts that have been years behind. I haven't had any of these issues brought to my attention that were concerns. It seems the police department's working, or I'm sorry, the fire department is working. I know there, that there's still the need to transition, to make it complete with full-time officers. I, I just think, give us an opportunity to meet with you, express some of our concerns. If, if the fire department feels that within the next month or two, we need to file and head to the C I R court, then I apologize. We're already three months into this contract, four months without a contract. I appreciate the hard work. You identify Karen Jackson and Ashley Clark and you and others, members of, that, that go to these meetings. I, I just think that if, if we are given a month or two to at least express our concerns and you go back, let's see what comes back, and then maybe a, a little bit of a different package. Maybe, maybe it comes back as the same. I don't know. But I, I would sure hope the fire department, maybe, maybe it was a mistake to make a vote, take a vote tonight, minus two council members. But I, I would just ask that within the next week or two, you sit down with us, let us talk to you about some of our concerns, go to the union and, and try to address them. Maybe the same contract comes back. Maybe there can be a couple minor changes made and brought back. Thank you.
Mr. Burns?
So I do have one question. So just use it as an example, with a captain position, so right now, the compromise was ten. When, and what Chief Guido said is that in actuality, we could be forced to actually pay for eighteen captain positions? That's correct? And so...
That's correct, and it would be eighteen immediately.
Okay, and so one of the things that I, I think is that, well, at least could, maybe Joe or Chief Guido, could you give us more examples of, you know, in the long run, for instance, if, you know, just more examples like that, where there was, you know, compromise compared to what we, you know, could be forced to end up paying out? If that, is that a clear question?
Well, we'll, we'll certainly do that as we meet with council members three at a time and get their, their input and bring this back after we've had a chance to hear those concerns and discuss them with the union.
Okay.
Any other questions? Item number eleven C?
Item eleven C is Resolution Number 2018-03, approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the professional services agreement between the City of Bellevue and Olson Associates, Inc., for the final design of Thirty-Sixth Street improvements, being blind to Platt V. Road in the amount of $647,600.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to re-approve Resolution Number 2018-03.
I'll second.
Second. Mr. Shannon, discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, current business.
So item A is approval of an authorization for the mayor and city administrator to sign the routine necessary W P S Medicare Part B revalidation paperwork.
Move to approve item twelve A.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
You?
Item B is a request for permission to purchase two twenty-four-foot utility trailers for the street department from Northern Truck Equipment Corporation, using the State Contract Number 14311 O C, not to exceed $22,956 for the two of them, or $11,478 each.
Move to approve item twelve B.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? See, Mr. Modri?
Yes. There are two old trailers we're replacing with this, is that correct?
That's correct.
What are we gonna, what's gonna be the disposition of those two, two other trailers?
We'll put them, probably put them on the auction. It could do with the rest of our surplus equipment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item C is a request for permission to purchase a remote-location camera unit and push cable reel footage counter to enable the Public Works Department to do inlet full inspections in the amount of $10,738.64 to be paid from the storm water grant funds.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to re-approve item twelve C, the request permission to purchase equipment for $10,738.64.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item D is approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the letter of form agreement with H G M Associates, Inc., for Phase Six improvements, Design Services at American Heroes Park, in the amount of $71,475.
Move to approve item twelve D.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? Mr. Shannon?
Mr. Roberts, does this include Mr. Frazier's proposal?
No, that is a separate item from what this proposal is.
All right. Is there a way we can incorporate that in there? Is there anything you need to do or add to incorporate our part of that project?
No, because that's gonna be a separate agreement between Mr. Frazier and H G M. We'll just, we'll piggyback the two together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Item E is approval of change order numbers, excuse me, change orders number two through five for fifteen-hundred Wall Street City Hall project to Lund Ross in the amount of $198,263.35. Change order number one for additional security card readers to C, S E I in the amount of $24,812. And proposal for exterior signs to Omaha Neon signs in the amount of $12,725 for a grand total of $235,800.35.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll make a motion to re-approve item twelve E, approval of change orders two through five for $235,800.35.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Shannon?
Are these items that were forgotten in the contract, or why are, why are we seeing all these change orders come through on this project?
Well, with the renovation of a building, there's always things that pop up that you don't account for. So that was a lot of just little things, but then two of the biggest items was for Sarpy County for our I T. equipment. That was never included in the original, the original bid. And then also, there was the, oh, the elevator equipment, which we knew was gonna have to be done per code, but that was also not included in the bid because we didn't know what the extent was. So we had to have an analysis done on it by the state elevator marshal, whatever he's called.
All right. And how many doors are we putting readers on?
I believe it's twelve of them.
Any other questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item F is approval for the mayor to sign the in-agreement extension amendment for 2015 C D B G council-approved rebuilding-together housing program.
Move to approve item twelve F.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Mr. Cook?
Mayor, I don't know if anybody's here to...
I think Rich can answer. Rich is here.
Rich, I just got a quick question. On this particular item, what they were, it was approved in January of sixteen for a hundred thousand. And so they've had two years of this, and had a remaining of forty-two thousand. I think that is a little low. I think there's some bills out there that haven't been paid. And I guess part of my concern is now we're gonna go to twelve G, which we gave them a hundred thousand in two thousand seventeen, and nothing's been spent. And so my concern is, if you just look at of the original first $100,000, you know, they, in two years, they spent about two-thirds. So a third year, we maybe would get the third, third spent, so it'd be down to a balance of zero. So part of me, my concern is, is that, you know, it sounds like this is a great project. They do critical and emergency repairs. I, we have homes for the elderly and disabled, great program. Our, our literature says that the, I think the director of this group this last year took time to go to all the churches and community centers and affected areas and try to find, see if they could find more customers. But part of me struggles with this is that they had a hundred thousand, and I don't know what they had expended by the end of last year, but then we give them another hundred thousand, and, and they're get, the one hundred thousand, a one hundred thousand is about a third of the whole C D B G money we get, and, and, and they're just not spending it. So why did we give them another hundred thousand? And to me, we're gonna get at the end of year three for the 2015, and they're then gonna be at the year of, the end of year two on the 2016, and never even touch that hundred thousand, potentially. So that's my, I, I, how do we address this? Because I, I think we're giving them a big, large sum of money that unfortunately isn't being spent.
You have a committee that each of you gets to nominate a person to be on that committee, and that committee looked at the requests and made a decision that these were the best projects to spend the money on. So that's the, the first place we should probably go.
I guess that, to me, that should have been answered a year ago when they were looking at the second one hundred thousand. You're having difficulty spending the first hundred thousand, and I'm guessing back then, maybe they spent a third of it. To me, I'm really surprised that they were given more money. I think they should have been required to maybe had a year of sitting out to try to expend the first hundred thousand they were given, and then came back maybe to the C D B G committee and ask for additional.
We can get you more involved in that C D B G, if you'd like.
No, I, I, you know, there's, there's just a lot of projects that we need to do. And that, that's, there's, you're talking, right now, a hundred, almost fifty thousand dollars setting, say, in a bank, waiting for this group to expend it, when I'm sure I could go to Mr. Rob, Roberts and some other business owners in this community that would have said, you know, I could have maybe used that money and got some projects done. We continue to see, and I, it's not right for me, you know, I wish Abby was here tonight, 'cause she probably is more intimate with the details and how the meetings went, but just to me, we're, we're, and I have no problem extending, but we, we gotta get, you know, the word shovel ready. We gotta get projects to where, when we're giving them money, they got a year or two to expend it, and we can see results.
I think we should get through these. I understand what you're saying, and I do have some ideas on looking forward at the roughly three hundred thousand dollars we get, and maybe taking a little different direction on how we help more people with that money.
Thank you.
But I don't wanna say too much more.
I hear you. Thank you very much.
With you. Mr. Modri?
Yes, I had, I had the same concerns, but what, what happens if we do not extend these contracts? Does that money go back to HUD or?
It would either go back to HUD, or we would have the chance to reallocate to another project, I believe, right now. Because they had, those funds haven't expired yet, but we'd have to explain ourselves.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is three to one.
Thank you.
Item G is approval for the mayor to sign the agreement extension amendment for 2016 C D B G, council-approved rebuilding-together housing program, and emergency housing repair program, excuse me.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to re-approve item twelve G.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item H, approval for the mayor to sign the agreement extension amendment for the two thousand sixteen CDBG council-approved Casa Bellevue Visitation Center.
Mr. Cook?
I'll make a motion we approve item number twelve H.
Second.
Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Item I is approval for the mayor to sign the agreement extension amendment for the two thousand C- sixteen CDBG council-approved two-one-one-zero office retail upgrade.
Mr. Burns?
I move to approve item twelve, aye.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri?
Do we know if, uh, if the owner will still be able to go through with this project? If, uh, extensive costs come in for that, uh, water contamination? That's going to add additional cost to this thing that wasn't, uh...
I think we have to find out just what that cost might be before we really know, if they'll continue with their part of the contract.
Yeah. Okay.
And again, this is a two-year-old project, right?
Yeah. This one, this one was, uh, uh, a, uh, I, I think a little bit of a surprise with the contamination, if that's the one we're talking about, to...
Mr. Cook?
Yeah, but their first year ended in, at the end of seventeen. They are requesting to go to the year number two.
This is year number two. Yes.
That's okay.
Seventeen, you're just...
No.
Because they were sixteen appropriate.
Uh, this one, I believe January of two thousand seventeen. Yeah. And then they found some contamination and...
Any other questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is three to one.
Item J, approval for the mayor to sign the request for release of funds for CDBG two thousand seventeen projects and authorization to submit certification forms to HUD.
Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve item twelve J.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is three to one.
Thank you.
Item K is, uh, the, uh, approval to appoint an ad hoc committee to review cemetery rules.
Mr. Modri?
Yes, Mayor. Uh... I move that we, uh, approve the establishment of a task force in accordance with the, uh, the letter I provided with, with the makeup, uh, there for, for the reasons I've specified.
And I would second that motion. The, what was approved last council meeting was that we would set up a, uh, task force with three council members to go over these rules. That's what was voted on, that's what was approved. And so that's what we need to stick to, is what we've approved already, is that three council members will look at these rules. We already have the input from the city, we already have the input from Mr., uh, Brian Madison, and so we know, you know, what changes they want to make. We want to sit down, we want to look at these, and as council president and the person that, uh, brought this forward, it's Jim Oudry's call, uh, who gets put on that. And, uh, so I support Jim and, uh, what he's doing, because, uh, it's his call.
Do we, yeah, do we have a motion and a second? And, and now discussion. Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Mr. Preister has a question.
My question is, is there anything, lovely, lovely, is there anything in what was proposed that you see as unconstitutional?
Do you mean proposed in the cemetery rules?
In the rules, and with changes to put the fees into the schedule, or anything that would be appropriate?
No, I don't see anything unconstitutional.
Is there anything beyond being constitutional or problematic, in your view? Other than it being a difference of opinion?
I, I, I don't see anything problematic.
Okay. Thank you for that. My concern is that we are delaying something, and we don't know, it seems a moving target. We don't know what the problem is. We have essentially, as, as Mr. Hawley said, the very same rules that are in the new rules, as sixty of them were transferred over, as he told us. So I, I'm just not clear what we're trying to accomplish, what we're evaluating. We don't really have anything new. And I asked at the prior meeting, what changes, what was the problem? And to this date, nobody has brought up a problem. I think essentially there's one issue that seems to be, and that's the issue of what flags can be displayed. Um, I would ask Mr. Shannon or Mr. Modri what they see as problems in doing the same rules, or what they would like to see changed.
Thank you, Mr. Preister. I appreciate your comments, but we've, we've already taken the action to delay this, so this is kind of a moot point. But just for example for you, um, one of the changes they made in the rules is that if we had approved the rules, the rules would no longer have come to the city council, because the city council was written out of the process in these new rules. So Mr. Madison would have been able to, uh, make up rules out on a whim, and, uh, the council would never have had to say again. So that's just one example of the things that we want to look at and correct and address, and we want to have time to dig out all of the problems in these and bring them back. We've already set a timeframe on this. Uh, the December council meeting, we, we did a three-month extension, and so we have a timetable already established. We've already agreed it's going to be a three council member, uh, task force that we're going to do. So we're just completing, uh, what we assigned ourselves to do last council meeting at this point.
Then I would ask if this tended to be rules and guidelines that actually affect cemeteries, and if there's somebody with experience going to be on the committee who has actually worked in cemeteries or understands cemeteries, or is this going to be basically a political decision based on political preferences?
I think that, uh, Councilman Oudry has been extremely fair in his pick of, uh, council members to be on this. Uh, I, I, I think you're, uh, questioning his integrity on this, and, uh, I don't think that's appropriate.
Mr. Modri?
Yes, thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I'm not only proposing the three council members, but, uh, Brian Madison as well, who, who's in charge of, of the cemetery and its maintenance upkeep, uh, to be on, on the, uh, task force. Uh, Mr. Shannon, uh, mentioned one area. Another area that, uh, maybe needs to be looked at is the hours for the cemetery to dusk in the winter months. It doesn't give people a lot of time if they want to visit a loved one after work. Uh, it's, it's already dark, uh, in many cases. So maybe look at and revise those hours, uh, for operating hours in the cemetery. Uh, there's also an item I mentioned last time with, uh, no firearms being allowed. That was an addition that did not come from the old rules. Uh, I understand, the answer I got back is, we're going to do it because we can. Well, is, is that, is that a good enough reason? Is there a valid reason for doing it other than you have the authority to do so? So we want to look at, at those kinds of things, and we want to, we want the committee to be made up of people that are willing to look at items in the rules and not go in saying, there's nothing to change, and just go through the motions of, uh, of meeting.
Thank you both. I appreciate the insight and that information.
Are there any other questions, discussion? See none, please vote.
Uh, I just want to explain my reasoning, because, uh, as far as the change goes, I don't, I don't actually think that it, I understand your reasoning, you know, as far as conflicts go, but I don't think it makes any sense, because I think what happens is, is now we just have Brian Madison, and I think what's going to happen the whole time is he's just going to be defending himself, and I think he's going to be outnumbered, because he's going to have three council perspectives, and he's only going to have his perspective. I don't think that's fair. So I think it'd be good if you had Jeff Roberts and Joe Manjumeli. The other thing is, is I think keeping Don on there, you know, yes, he's, you know, didn't want to continue it, um, you know, and I also didn't, um, because we could have made changes, you know, along the way. Um, but I think it's good to have a little bit of diversity. Um, that way, you know, when it's three against one, and that's exactly what I think is going to happen, um, and I don't think anybody's going to really challenge you guys. And I don't mean that, you know, in a negative way, you know, you know, not to be all personal or anything, but, you know, I, I just don't think it's fair. So I don't think that we should change it. I think we should just stick with it as it is.
The motion on the table right now is to approve Mr. Oudry's task force.
Wait, but wouldn't that also be... So basically, it'd be amending the task force that we would...
No.
Originally have approved.
No.
Because that's what we took it out of the, am I confused here?
We're, we're just voting to approve Mr. Oudry's task force.
Okay, so...
But the item on the agenda was not Mr. Modri's.
Right, so...
Mr. Oudry's task force is replacing it.
So basically, we would have to amend what is on, correct?
I, I think it probably would be proper, just to clean it up, and, yeah, Mr. Modri, make a motion to amend the actual item to create a task force.
Yes. Okay, let, let me formally make that motion then, to amend the item, uh, for the creation of an ad hoc committee, committee, uh, with a makeup that's on, on the agenda, to, uh, amend that, to, uh, prove the appointment of a task force consisting of, uh, council members Cook, Hanson, Shannon, and, uh, Brian Madison.
And I'll second that.
A motion, second, do we vote on the amendment first?
I'm confused. Doesn't he want to amend it to what he had in his proposal?
Yes, yes.
That's not what he said.
I believe.
He said Hanson. He did not say himself, and he has himself as part of a, one of the members.
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't?
For what I read. He has proposed it as it's written in his memo.
Sir? So we have a motion and a discussion on the amendment. Now we vote on the amendment. Please vote.
Vote is three to one.
Discussion or questions? Please vote.
Here.
Wait. Hold on.
Okay, so now, okay, that makes sense. Okay.
Yes, I, I just wanted to check. So in the past, when the committee was putting this together, there was legal counsel serving with it.
Yes.
In this case, there is not going to be the involvement of Mr. Buckley or legal counsel?
That, yep, you're, you're correct. I should have said with the assistance of, uh, Attorney Tim Buckley.
And so is that part of your motion?
It, it should have been, yes. It, it's in my write-up.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. So Sabrina has the...
Yep, thank you.
Do we need to amend the amendment?
Why, why don't you reconsider, uh, amend your amendment and revote on it?
Would anybody object, since we're amending it, that we add Alan, Alan Hawley in there? Since he has five revisions of history in there?
Did he resign from...
Well, this is a private citizen that has the, the core knowledge of all this. I mean...
The, uh, the Policy Resolution sixteen for council task force, uh, only allows for the, uh, appointment of council members and city personnel, if approved by the city administrator. So...
So we're just amending to add assistance with...
Yes. Yep, I'd like to amend my previous amendment to in- include the Assistant Sir- City Attorney, uh, Tim Buckley.
I'm watching Sabrina. Do... Are we, are we there yet, Sabrina? Hold on.
Got it.
And a second by Mr. Cook?
Yep.
Any discussion? Please vote. Just on the amendment? To the amendment.
Three to one.
Okay. Now, don't we have the original? So this vote is to approve the task force as amended. Any questions? Please vote.
And the vote is three to one.
Item thirteen, administration report. Are there any questions? Must be limited to the two current report. Are there any questions from Mr. Manjumeli? See none. We'll move on to public requests to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees and members of the general public shall not involve in, involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official or employee, or a member of the general public. In City Code, Section two dash six eight, regarding the manners of addressing the council, copies of the aforementioned rules are posted on the outside of the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes.
I apologize, I've never done this, so I want to... My request is actually to have the city of Bellevue to actually enforce the ordinances that it has on the book, and for the planning department to not have the discretion to make, to, to pick and choose which ordinances they do enforce and which they don't enforce. I'd also like to see it done that you have to have a permit, I mean, you, you would have to get a permit and have an inspection and have it passed before you can open for business, for the general safety of the public. I mean, I could elaborate on to some of the issues that I have, but I don't, like I said, I'm not exactly sure what the proper process is.
Well, first thing, if we could get your name and address, please.
My name is Peter Mabry. My address is five zero five Galvin Road North.
And I need you to sign in.
I would be happy to.
Thank you, yes. You have, try to stick within the five minutes, but give us mu- enough details. And we cannot respond, but we can certainly make sure that the department...
I've purchased buildings and I've done projects in Omaha and Fremont. I've never done it in Bellevue. I went through the process. I hired a general contractor and architect, engineer, and, um, I had to go through a rigorous, uh, approval process, permitting. I mean, I bought an old building. I put four hundred thousand dollars bringing it up to code. I actually got delayed five days because of a bump strip for the, for the blind to be able to access the building, and I complied. Like, I did not open. It's my understanding that you can completely skirt the city of Omaha ordinances if you pay some kind of fee to ask that it gets changed. And then you also, if you don't get permits, you're absolutely, you're actually able to run your business without having the permits, and the concern that I would have is that the people that did not pull permits, in water facilities, you have dryers that put, put out CO2, and you have makeup air that's, that lights the fire that actually causes... In laundry facilities, you have dryers that put, put out CO2, and you have makeup air that's, that lights the fire that actually causes the dryer to heat. And when you put the makeup air right next to the CO2, you're essentially pulling CO2 into a building, and you're putting the public in danger. And then also, like, with washing machines, you have three thousand pounds of G-force that actually, it's intricable, right? It moves up, down, everywhere, if there's off balance load, if they're not properly installed or bolted, or the concrete's not thick enough. Like, you have a three thousand pound wrecking ball that can cause measurable damage to the public. And like I said, I'm a libertarian, so I actually feel like it's crazy that I'm actually here, because I'm usually anti-government, but if I'm going to follow rules, I would like other people to follow rules, even though I don't really want rules. So, I don't, I mean, that's... Like I said, I don't, I just want to... Ordnances, are they rules or are they guidelines? Like, must they be enforced, or are they not? Is it a guideline in Bellevue?
Do we want, um, Stukenholdt to answer that?
I mean, I was told that the planning told the code enforcement to stand down on ordinance, and they said there's an email, I asked for the email, and I can't get it. So, I talked to my lawyer, he asked me if I really wanted to do this. I've sued the state of Nebraska and the city of Omaha, their lengthy processes, I am not interested in trying to do that. Because like I said, it just, I've won both times, but at what cost? I mean, it's just...
Sir, I just want to explain this part of the meeting, the process is...
My request is to enforce the ordinances, is that...
Well, this part of the meeting, it is to, for public input only. Council members or staff cannot respond to any questions and engage in any discussion on any items you brought up, because that, because that is not on the agenda tonight. So, to do so would be in violation of the Open Meetings Act. So, it is for input only, unfortunately, we cannot discuss or answer questions.
Might I ask another question? Is it possible to have E stricken? Is there, like, so is it the next meeting, the second reading, where you can have an amendment? Because even though I'm anti-government, that actually, the thirty washer rule had some very good insight, and I definitely understand the reasoning behind it. If you go to Omaha and you look at the mega mats that run down, they're drug havens, there's prostitution happening in them, there's homeless sleeping in them. Like, having smaller laundromats is a good policy if you want to keep irrepute people away from your city. And someone will build a mega mat, and they will charge less, and they will drive all the other businesses out of... It might actually be me, if I'm allowed to go as big as I want, it could be me that drives everybody out of town.
So, your question is, if you, if you...
The E, how do I get this, can I get this stricken?
So, next, in, um, our next, our next meeting, January twenty-second, is the public hearing on that item. And that's where public can speak on that item.
Is this a part, since they can't re... Can I get that brought on to the, how would I go about getting, can I talk to you, if you're the city attorney? How would I get a, a resolution to actually enforce the ordinances and have the city inspectors actually deem buildings safe for inhabitants, but prior to opening and not in the process while they are open?
Sir, all I can say is just what the mayor said.
That's fine.
This, this ordinance is on for second reading.
I don't understand it, so like I said, I apologize, I didn't realize what this was, I will come back to the next meeting.
Thank you.
I hope I have not as much time as he had. I want to wish you guys a Happy New Year, and I do want to thank, uh, well, first I want to say that I'm a big supporter of the fire department and the police department. I think they're doing a good job, but I want to thank, uh, Mr. Cook, Mr. Shannon, Mr. Oudry for trying to look out for our dollars too. We have to spend our dollars wisely, and that, and that's something that, uh, is a big concern of mine in this city. Uh, the CIR is something that really has always bothered me. It's, one city does something and make, gives a raise, then they, everybody compares to that city, another city makes another raise, and then they compare to that city. So, it's, it's kind of a snowballing effect all the time. So, I, I wish there was another way of trying to make comparison to CIR. I'm not in favor of the, uh, restaurant sales tax. Until I see many of the suggestions I made over the last six years, uh, anybody who votes for a sales tax, I hope that they, people remember that, uh, in the next election. I've suggested before in regard to a monthly balance sheet, we need to have a Charlie Jensen, a state auditor, come down here and look at our, look at and have a complete audit. One of the biggest mistakes we ever made was taking the rescue squad building away from Pat Shannon. We've lost millions of dollars because of that. I've also suggested that maybe we could eliminate that, uh, department and have Papillion do it. Uh, Papillion does it for La Vista, they have the same software, we could eliminate software, we could save a lot of money there. Something I gotta do myself here. I'd also like to have, uh, in regard to the sales tax coming up, I'd like to have the two candidates who are running for mayor to speak out what they think about that. I would, I'm hoping that, uh, the press will ask about, ask them what they feel we should have a sales tax, or, sales tax or not. I obviously have, when I ran for mayor, I suggested we eliminate the Assistant City Administrator. Now that he's going to a different position, maybe it's time just to not rehire another one, save some money right there too. We need, uh, there was six million dollars, I feel, was spent on that world baseball, but yet there's, nobody can get the figures of where the six million dollars was spent. We need, we need to be a compliment what we're doing right now, and, and see where our money's going before we start thinking about raising taxes. I talked to, uh, Doug, Doug Black, the mayor of Papillion, and I've gone to your strategic meetings for five, six years, I didn't go to this last one, but I asked him if they have a certain special person they come in and hire to do that. When I was in the city council, we didn't have that, we just did it ourselves, and Mayor Black said he does that himself. He and the city administrator, uh, who I don't think are anymore qualified than the people here, I think you guys should run the meeting, forget about hiring somebody to do that. To me, it's kind of a, kind of a waste of time, and I might have seen it before in the past. The other thing is that, uh, it would be nice to have the, the meetings you have for the, for the garbage, the new garbage, uh, containers, you have them all at seven o'clock. I suggest, uh, there are a lot of people don't want to get out at seven o'clock, a lot of older people. I would suggest you have at least one at the senior center, right, right across, right near, right near here, have that like one o'clock in the afternoon. And that would make it easier for a lot of older people to come and, and look, and, and discuss and find out what's going on there too. I have talked about dog park before, about having another one, and I was having my dog down there this, this afternoon, and a guy came in with his dog, and I asked him where he's from, he's from Denver, he was at Chicago for, uh, his dad's funeral, and he flies for United Airlines, and he flew his wife back, but he drove the dog back, seven hours, and he, I asked him, how'd you find out about Jewel Park? He said he Googled it in, it was just off the interstate, so, so, uh, that, that was kind of encouraging that people, and I've met other people coming through, uh, other parts of the country, coming down to Jewel Park, but we really do need another, another dog park, and, uh, you're doing, Jim Oudry did a good thing with the dog situation now. But, but we have to, we just have to start thinking about the residents of this city and doing things that are good for them. So, I appreciate all of your efforts, and I, again, I wish you a Happy New Year.
Madam Mayor, uh, will I have to sign in again? Okay, just asking. A couple of years ago, I, when we went to this new fire department instead of volunteer, I said at the time that it was going to cost us a lot of money, and, uh, we'd end up like Omaha did a few years ago, and be behind on the monies that were needed. And, yes, I don't know what the CIR is, okay? But I, somebody's got to say, hey, look, we're transitioning for five or ten years, or, no, ten years is too long, but five years, and the CIR is for somebody who has been, like Omaha, had a fire department for a hundred and fifty years paid, or however long it's been, and, and the subject. But we're going to get in financial trouble if we keep going the way we are. I know you can't answer me, it's, uh, just a moot question, how long is the chief of police going to be in limbo? It's been over ninety days now. Are we going to keep him until sometime in eighteen or nineteen? And, again, Bellevue does not need a restaurant tax. Omaha has a large, large influx of people for, to fill all their hotels for all kinds of things that they do. Bellevue does not. Bellevue thinking that they are Omaha is bad thinking. And I urge the, um, members of the city council to vote that down and reduce costs, costs within the city. Thank you, good night.
Mayor, I'd like to respond to the one item that was on the agenda tonight that he addressed. Mike?
Yes, sir.
The CIR, very simply, it's a crowbar that the union can stick in the city's wallet. Okay?
I don't know what CIR means, uh, city in...
It's like, uh, community... Court of Industrial Relations, okay.
Commission.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commission.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas and Happy New Years.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? See none, I'll go ahead and move on to item number sixteen for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote. Thank you, we are adjourned until January the twenty-second.